Hello everyone and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for December 3rd, 2025. We have a special presentation today by Eric Veneman, who is going to talk to us about the Keith Formula, sometimes called the Keith Count for cube action in races. So Eric's gonna take care of the presentation today. I'm gonna sit back and enjoy. And I'm sure Eric, you'll be ready to take questions as they come up, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, Eric, it's all yours. Take it away.
Right, so first I must say that this technique is usually called the Keith Count, but I don't like calling it a count because people might think it is for pip counting, which it is, which it is not. It is for when you already have the pip count and then you can refine it to have an idea of the correct cube action for the position. If the position has a lot of wastage, which we will get to soon. So I like calling it the Keith Formula instead. So that's why, but you might find it on the internet as the Keith Count. So let's begin. So what is indeed a count though is the half crossover pip count, which we touched upon previously in my previous lesson. So let's just have a quick refresher of the half crossover pip count because we will need to use it or any other pip counting technique to get both the pip counts for both players in order to use the Keith Formula, right? So I won't explain the half crossover account again. I'll just refresh how it's done. So for black here, you would count it these... Can you guys see my mouse here moving? Just...
Yes, we can see.
Okay, alright. So here you would get two checkers worth two each, plus two worth one each, so six. And then these are worth minus one each, so minus two. So black's count would be four, sorry, six, right? Yes, no, four, because it's six here and minus two here. And here four for white and minus four for white, so white is zero. And then because black has four more counted than white, we multiply by three and that's the actual pip count difference. So we should expect around a 12 pip count difference between the players before refining the count. But let's refine the count to check if it changes anything. So here black has four checkers that are in front of the center triangle. So these reduce four pips that he needs to bear off. And here, but here he has two that are behind and two that are behind here, but these are cancelled out by the two that are ahead here and one more behind here that isn't cancelled out by anything. So four forward and three back in total. So it should be one more ahead and one ahead for black. So it should be like 13 instead of 12 right now. But then we do it for white, which is three ahead, three more ahead here, six, but five behind. So one more ahead for white as well. So it cancels out actually with blacks one ahead. So black should be exactly 12 pips in front of white. So if we get the pip, so I just... This is just detailing the process that I made for refining the count. So here we see that black is indeed 12 pips behind white exactly. And we need the absolute count for Keith Formula. And then remember that in order to get the absolute count, you get, for example, for black, which his count was four, before we multiplied by three to get 12, right, for the pip difference. We multiply that again by three, so 12, right? And some 75. So it's plus 75 on those 12 should be 87. So there's only a one pip mistake here. I'm not sure why, but yeah, so yeah, so 87. And we can use 87 or 86 here for the count. So if we analyze this position by the eight, 12, eight, nine, 12 pips, a rough rule for cubes in the races. Remember, if we are 8% ahead, you can cube. If you're 9% ahead, you can recube. And if you're 12% ahead, you should drop. I guess most people here would know this formula. By this, by this count, we should drop this position. And this position came from an actual game of mine where I didn't realize that I should have used Keith here. And I thought, oh, white is 12 pips ahead, that's way more than 12%. So I should probably like 12 pips ahead in a 74 pip race. So that's why it's more than 12%, right? So I thought, oh, I should drop this. But I should have used Keith because as you will see, this is a take. The reason it's a take here, it's because white has a lot of wastage here with these four checkers on, near his bear off tray, especially on the one point, which is very high wastage. So that's why we can take this. As you can see, it's a blunder to pass this, which we wouldn't know by just using the eight, nine, 12 rule. So how do we do the Keith Formula? First, you have to adjust the pip counts of each player for wastage. So for each, for each checker on the one point that is above the quantity of one, so each checker beginning from the second checker there onwards, you add two points to the count. Sorry, I misread this. It's talking about the gaps first. So for each gap present on the six, five or four points, you add one pip to the count. So here black has no gaps, right? But white has a gap on the four point. So white would have one extra pip here added to the adjusted count, right? So here now I'm talking about the extra pips to the excessive checkers on the points near the bear off tray, right? So for each checker on the three point, you add one pip. For each checker on the two point, also one pip. But each excess checker on the one point, you add two pips, as I've mentioned, right? But what is counted as an excessive checker? For the one point, it is every checker that's above one, as I mentioned. For every, from the two point, for every checker that's above one as well. But on the three point, every checker that's above three counts as wastage, right? So here is one pip for every checker over three on the three point, one pip for every checker over one on the two point, but two pips for every checker over one on the one point. So the one point is very wasteful. So you add two pips for every checker there that's above one checker, so from two onwards. This, the two point is not so wasteful, so you add only one pip. And the three point is so not wasteful that you only start counting the waste from the third checker there onwards. Sorry, from the fourth checker there onwards. You can have three there and not have any wastage, right? So the way to remember this well is with the L shape. So you memorize this drawing here, this shape. So you see there's three gaps, so each gap is plus one. You have three checkers, which, so these are the checkers you can have without adding any wastage. So on the three point, you can have three checkers. Here two, here one on the two point and one checker on the one point. So, and here is the number you have to add for the wastage. So everything is one, so every gap adds one. Every checker over three on the three point adds one. Every checker over one adds one as well. And the one point is the only one that adds two for wastage, right? So take a few seconds to try to memorize this image here because it helps. But I will be referring to this, these values a lot during presentation anyway. So should be, should be easy to remember by the end of it, but...
Is the gap penalty added even though you don't have any checkers like on the six?
Yeah, it is added if you don't have any checkers on this. So if it's empty, as it says here, you add the penalty. There's, if there's even one checker on any of them, you don't add the respective penalty. So here I would add three pips for black because he has three gaps here on the four, five, six. I would add and no, I wouldn't add anything for the checkers because he has exactly what he, what is the limit on each of the points here, right? Another three, two and one points. Then after doing that, after, you have to adjust using these parameters here for both players, right? So you take each player's absolute pip count, pip count, and you adjust it using these steps here. And then after you do that, step two of the process would be to add one seventh more to the pip count of the player whose own role, who's thinking about cubing this position, right? So after you adjusted here, you would add one seventh more to black, who's, sorry, the white, who's the one thinking about cubing this position, right? He's the one that has the race lead here and who's on roll because you can see the dice here on the corner here for white. So white would be the one thinking about cubing this. But in order for black to figure out if he can take or drop, he has to put himself in white's shoes and pretend that he is white thinking about doubling because then the formula is going to tell white if the opponent should take or drop. And then what, a black will know if he should, can take or drop, right? So, so thinking on white's perspective, we add one seventh to his count, which is called the on-roll penalty. Okay, so this is a mandatory step of the Keith Count that I have forgotten to do many times before. It is very easy to forget to do this step. And then you'll get, the formula will be completely wrong. So it's important to not to forget to do this. Try to be better than me. And then finally, you, now that you have, due to, that you adjusted each player's pip count by the penalties and you added one seventh to the player on rolls count, you can now use the actual Keith criteria to know if you should double or not. So after all this process, if the player on rolls pip count is worse, not better, okay, worse, if it exceeds the other player's pip count by four pips, you can still double, you can, you can double and take and the other person has a take. So for example, if, after all this process, we find out that white has a count of, I don't know, 74, right? And black has an adjusted count of 70. Why would that happen? Why would white end up with a higher adjusted pip count than black? One, because of the wasted that he has. But two, because remember he has to add one seventh to his count. So that inflates his count so much that it can easily go over black's count, adjusted count. But that's no problem because that's expected. And you can still cube even if you are worse in the end in the pip count, right? So if you are five pips worse, then you can't, you don't double. But if you are four pips worse or better, then you can start doubling, right? So if you are four pips worse exactly, you can double take. If you are three or two pips worse, you can redouble and the person, but the opponent can still take. But if you are only one pip worse after all that, you can redouble and the opponent can, has to drop from one pip worse onwards. So if the pip count is the same after all that process, then white is so good that he, that the, that black has to drop in this case, right? So so just a little note here that I added like to drive this point home that it's not because your final count is worse than you, than the opponent's is higher than the opponent's that it means that you are terrible in the game and you shouldn't, you shouldn't cube. It's expected that it can be worse and yet you can double, right? So just drilling this very thoroughly here. And one more, before we get to actually applying this rule, this criteria, one more interesting thing is that by watching a video by Joseph Hallett, which is the developer of Gnu Backgammon, who died last year. And I really enjoy his content, he's really smart in Backgammon. Has a lot of nerdy stuff about the game. He investigated the counts and he found out that by adjusting the window here slightly, it makes for a better Keith count according to him. So he found out through his testing that I'm way too dumb to understand. He's way smarter than me, I don't understand exactly what he did. So he tested it's like in a million positions against bots or something. And he found out that it's better if you consider the redouble on two pips instead of three. So you have to be two pips worse than the opponent or better than that to redouble instead of three, right? But we'll get to that soon. So, so the, so from now on, I'll be using Joseph Hallett's adjustment to the Keith criteria to be, for the redouble to be two pips, right? Because I trust Joseph Hallett, that's basically it. So let's go.
Thank you. So does that put the three pips in the same category as the four pips?
Yes, yes, with three pips you can double, exactly. With three pips you can double but not redouble according to Hallett, yes.
Thank you.
But traditionally with three pips, you can redouble instead of double. So here I made a, like a graphic to visualize this better. So for example, let's suppose that the blacks pip count would be 60 in that example. And then we do all the calculations, all the one seventh, the, all the gap adjustments, the extra checker adjustment. Then we find out that white's pip count is 65, right? So it would be here. So it is not within the double window here, it is outside. So there's, so here white would not be able to double. But, and of course, black can take because black can take any value that is 62 or two pips higher than his count or above, right? But if it was 64, so four points above 60, which is black's count. So if white's count was 64, then he could now double and black could take. If it was 63 according to the traditional criteria, then he could redouble. But according to, to Joseph Hallett's adjustment, it would be 62 here. So, so according from 62, then white could redouble. And if white's count was 61, so only one worse than black's, then black would have to drop and anything better than that. So the same pip count or if white's pip count ended up being better than blacks despite all the adjustments, then black would have to drop and so on, right? So this is a good visual way to absorb the criteria. Let's keep going. So now let's actually apply this, everything we've just learned to the position. So how would we adjust here? Black has no adjustments whatsoever because he has no gaps. He has two checkers on the three point and we need three, as, we have three as the maximum, right? So we would need four or over to start applying penalties for the three point. And he has no checkers on the two or one points, but there's no adjustment applied here because only gaps on the six, five and four points apply penalties, right? So only the gaps on the high points apply penalties. There's no problem having gaps on the lower points, which you can easily deduce from the fact that the most efficient position for starting the bear off in Backgammon is the Trice Tower, I think it's called, where it has seven checkers on the six point and five checkers on the five point and three on the four point. So this position, this ideal theoretical position has no checkers on the, on the lower points. So you can remember that look, gaps on the lower points are not wasteful, right? This way, that's one way to remember that. But white here has a few adjustments to make. So we have to add one more pip for the gap here on the four point and four more pips for the extra checkers on the one point that he has over one here, right? So we would expect to add five pips to white's pip count, which I detailed here. So two extra checkers worth two each on the one point. So plus four total and a gap on the four point, so five point total. And there's no adjustment for black. So the step one of the entire thing is we change white's pip count from 74 to 79, right? So now the adjusted pip count for white is 79. And then remember we have step two, which is to add one seventh. So we take 79 divided by seven and we get 11, right? So 11 would actually be 77. But we always round down. So we would have like seven, this, the actual value would be like 11 point something because 11 plus seven, times seven, sorry, would be 77. But we always round down, so yeah, it's 11. And then, so 79 plus 11 is 90. So that's the actual adjusted value for, for white after step two. So now we have this final value for white. We, we can apply the criteria. So we take the final value for white, which is 90, minus 86, which is black's pip count, which remember was not adjusted. So we get four. So white is four pips worse than black. So this means it's a double take. So let's check if that's true. So some, before we check if that's true, some reminders here. So the Keith Count is to be used when you have, when you notice that either player has inefficiencies on their board. So things that are wasteful like gaps on the high points and too many checkers on the lower points. If neither player has that and it's like a race without contact, you can probably use the eight, nine, 12 rule and be just fine, right? Because you don't have to adjust for, for the features that, that would throw you off like in the first position that I showed. Don't forget to do step two again. Don't forget that step two is only applied to the player that's on roll, the player who has the cube and or is thinking about cubing. And, and remember that the Keith criteria is, is for money games. So the, it is assuming that you're playing a money game. So if you're playing match play, then on top of doing it as if it were a money game, you have to now adjust your final decision based on the specific score, right? So you can, you can pretend it's money game to make, to do the Keith criteria just fine. But then you have to adjust, oh, wait, it's not money game. So, oh, I'm, I should, the, the specific score make, has the, the player having a take point that's, that's higher than, than usual than money game. So I had to adjust for that. So yeah, remember that it's for money games in principle. So, okay, so going back to this position that we figured out it's a double take. One very interesting and useful thing is that XG has a race formula menu, which you can use to check several popular formulas. So he has the normal pip count, which is the eight, nine, 12 rule. You have the trice count, the thorpe and the keith. So yeah, so you can click on the Keith there in XG to check if your calculation is right. So it's a great way to practice the Keith Count because you can do it on your head or on a paper or something. And then you can double check with XG if you got it right, if you didn't forget anything because it's gonna have everything detailed here on this line here. So remember that we added four to whites for the two checkers there on the one point. And then we added one for the gap that they had on the four point. And we, 11 would be the, the step two adjustment, the one seventh added, right? So you can check that indeed we got 90, which was the correct value. And it did the same thing that I did, so 19, minus 86 is four. Alright, so it gives you the, everything you need to double check your, and learn by doing the Keith Count. And yeah, so let's see what the actual thing, calculation is from XG. Wait, I didn't include it. I'm so sorry, I think this is a different position. Yes, it is. So let's do it again on this one. I, I think I didn't include it because it was really a double take, right? So I just forgot to add the, the final output from XG. So let's do it again on this position. So would anybody like to try and their hand at doing it already? If not, I can do it again myself. Okay, I can, I'll do it myself then. Alright, so for black here, ignore this EPC stuff here. It's a different kind of calculation for adjusting for wastage, but it's much more complicated. I don't know how to use it myself. So I turned something on in XG that started showing the CPC and I don't remember what it was. So anyway, so here 59 for black and 69 for white. But so, oh, so we would think, oh, black is 10 pips ahead, we should probably cube this. But no, because as you can see, both players have wasted here, but black has worse wastage because he has his checkers on the one point instead of the three point. So we would definitely have to use the Keith Count. This is a very good like hint that you should be using the Keith Count. So let's do it. For, for black, we have four checkers more than one on the one point. So that would be plus eight, right? Because each checker on the one point is worth two. One, having one checker on the three is fine and on the three point is fine. We can have three checkers there and be okay. So no adjustment here and no adjustment for gaps. So black is only plus eight, right? And white has one, plus one for the gap on the four point and plus two for the extra checkers on the, on the three point. So only these two checkers here count and no further adjustments. So I would expect plus three for white and plus eight for black. So, yes, so here we got plus three for, for white and plus eight for black. So the adjusted counts are here, 72 for, for white and 67 for black. And we, remember we add a one seventh to the player who's, who's thinking about cubing, which is black. So nine, so 276. So 76 minus 72 is four. So this should also be a double take. Let's check. It is indeed a double take. So the Keith Formula got it right. And yeah, so any questions so far? Anything that was confusing or you didn't follow? I can, I can explain it again, no problem.
Is the, the seventh that you give for player on roll, that's, that's the, not the adjusted count? That's the original pip count, right?
No, it is on, on the adjusted count from step one.
Oh, it is.
Yes, because black's count was 59 originally, but then it's 67 because, because we added eight on it from the checkers on the one point. So that's the count that we take to add one seventh on top of. So here it is, some 67 here and it's a seven there, right? And if we do the like, how, do you guys say in English, the table of sevens, which is like the multiplication table for seven, like seven times seven, 49, ten, seven times eight, 60, 56, seven times nine, 63, I had to memorize all that. Yeah, all that, yeah. So seven times nine is 63. And because seven times 10 would be 70, that, that's over 76. So we, so we don't go to 70, we stay on the 63 because remember it rounds down. So that's why we stay on the 63. And, sorry, 60, I... Yeah, yeah, so we stay on the 63 because it's lower than 67 and 70 would be higher than 67. So yeah, it rounds down. Anyway, let's continue.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So this is kind of a very basic question. Why, because when I think of having my checkers on the ace point, I think that any roll will take them off. But why is he, why do you get penalized for having seven on the ace point?
Yeah, because when, when you have, let's suppose you have only checkers on the three point forwards. You don't have any orders on the four, five or six. let's suppose you have only checkers on the three-point forwards, you don't have any orders on the four, five or six. If you roll a six, eh, a six is what you could have used to take a checker from the six point to the bear to the bear off tray without wasting any pips on the dice, right? But if you if you use a six to to take a checker on the three point off, that's the three pips you wasted. Uh, that it could have used on a higher checker, but you couldn't because your checkers are mostly on the lower points.
Hmm.
So uh, on the same token, if everything is on the one point, then every time you roll a five, you waste four pips because uh, there could have been checkers on the five point that you could fully use all the pips to efficiently bear off. But you're wasting four because you previously in the game you threw them all on forwards on the one instead of being taken off. But of course, like, if all your checkers are on the one point and that and all the opponent's checkers are on the six or on the higher points or the six, five or four, you will probably win the race if you both begin at the same time. Uh, but the fact that all your checkers are on the one point means that you were wasteful before. Because if you uh, that that your checkers were already on the on the uh, home board way before black's checkers were or the opponent's checkers were. So uh, you already started the the race with a huge lead that you could have cubed and 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 passed, uh, could have been a double drop anyway, so. Uh, yeah, so I I don't know if it's uh, if that was clear. Um, uh, Jason, do you have a better way to explain uh, this this issue?
Uh, I think you explained it pretty well. It's really you want to compare two positions that have the same pip count.
Mm-hmm.
And if you have two positions with the same pip count and one of them has the checkers deep on the three, two and the one point, well, that means you have more checkers on the board, it's actually gonna take you longer to bear off.
Yeah, so for example, if black's checkers are all on the six, five, four and white's checkers are half here on the lower points, but half outside the the home board, so that uh, both players have the same pip count, I would expect black to win because he doesn't have any wastage. Because, okay, uh, white will take his checkers uh inside the board. But once they, he starts bearing off, then uh, and especially after he takes all the checkers that are on the higher points off, then the checkers on the lower points will have wastage. Whereas black won't have uh, near nearly as much wastage. So that that's the moment when white will be hurt by the fact that his checkers are, that he has checkers on the lower points, right? Uh, so he's expected to lose the race uh, towards the end, I think, because of the wastage.
You know, we talked, we talked about wastage before in this concept in both with bear offs and with match play. And I find that this is a very difficult concept to understand. And I think the important thing is to is to not think about it in terms of, well, my checkers are on the ace point, so everything gets to be borne off. That's not the way to think about it, it's comparing two positions with the same pip count.
Mm-hmm.
Or even similar pip counts, right, 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 Jason? Or even similar pip counts.
Well, yes, but.
Jason, can you say it again? You said it very well, can you say it again?
Sorry, Donald, what did you say?
Sorry, the way you explain it was was very good. Could you say it again in terms of what to think about having all the all the all the checkers on your one point?
Alright, so it's easy to say that when you get all your checkers on the one point, that great, I'm never going to miss, all of my rolls will always take off all the checkers. But that's not the way to think about it. The way to think about it is, I want to compare two positions with the same pip count. So Eric, do this for black, put all fifteen checkers on the.
You guys can see my, you can, you guys can can see my XG feed, right?
Eric, put all all fifteen checkers on the ace point.
Okay.
Pile them all the way up. Yeah, keep going.
I'm trying to, but uh, oh, it's it's slightly laggy, that's why.
Yeah, okay, good. Now for white, let's just have one checker on the six point, one checker on the five point, one checker on the four point.
Okay. Okay.
Same pip count, right?
Uh, yes.
Alright, who's doing better?
Of course it's white because he only has.
Of course it's white, because that is much more efficient. So you should be, the the comparison here is important. These two have the same pip count, but it's much, much worse to be black. And that shows you why checkers on the ace point are not very good.
But I think here is because white is, the main reason why it is so good is actually because he has twelve checkers off already while black has zero, so I.
Well, that that's a consequence of of piling those checkers on the ace point.
Yeah, I was thinking of a different way to show this wastage thing, which is for example here, uh, even if black is on roll, uh, he has, well, even though he's very, very wastey wastey in comparison to white, he has a ninety-nine percent chance of winning here. Uh, because he, because purely his pip count is way ahead of uh, whites, right? So we are comparing apples to oranges here because their pip counts are are very uh, one, the guys, even though the wastage is high, uh, his pip count is so be- so much better than whites that uh, it it doesn't matter that his wa- his waste is not enough to to even the odds here. But uh, let's take, let's make it this, the the same pip count. So I'm gonna have to try seventy-five pip count for black. Let's see. Uh, seventy-five. About this, seventy-five. Like so, like so. Okay, so roughly the same, right? But so now they have roughly the same pip count, we would expect like a fifty percent chance of winning. But the issue is that black has wastage here on the one point, so let's see what black's chances are. So even though black is on roll, he is an underdog here, and that's because of the wastage that he has, right? So does it make more sense now, uh, Charlie, I think it was you.
Eric, it's not because of the wastage only, it's because white can start bearing off at the next roll and black will not be able to. So it's not just the wastage.
Yes, so, okay, so let's let's, let's show it that that's not the case. Uh, here, right? So now they they would start bearing off pretty much at the same time. Uh, wow, interesting. Ah, but because they have the pip count changed now, oh, that that's the issue. So uh, even though black has wastage, his pip count is much better. So we have to make the pip counts uh, the same again, but I'm not sure how to make that uh, without uh, also changing the amount of uh, of uh, checkers that have to come in. So I think maybe um, like so, yeah, that that's probably where it was. So these are still on the on the outside, so two, two, ah, like like so. Yeah, so uh, black is still a an underdog even though he's on roll, right? Even though they have the same amount of checkers to come in. So it's it's, there's no way to get this perfect because you change one thing and and it changes another, right? So I don't think I can perfectly equalize the same amount of checkers to come in with the same pip count. Uh, but and when on this, and the checkers being on the same region of the board. But uh, yeah, so that's one, one way to show it. Um, yeah, so anyway, so I hope that cleared up uh, the issue a little bit. Uh, yeah, so as as Stephen is saying, uh, yeah, there's no easy way to show this. Dude, so I just have to take my word for it that checkers piled up on the lower points equal bad if you assume the same pip count for both players. But if if one player's pip count is sufficiently uh, higher, even though they have wastage, they can overcome this problem of wastage by just like sheer brute force of having a very uh, better pip count, right? Much better pip count. So yeah, so uh, without further ado, let's um, go back to the Keith count. Uh, let me share, change my.
Eric, can you, can you do the example with white having the same pip count? Black but having not all on the six points, like perhaps two on the five points.
Yep.
Try this, Eric. On the four, somehow distributed so that it still adds up to the same pip count, but they are more distributed over the board and and black is all on the one point.
Okay, uh, and uh, someone has said they have suggestions as well.
Yeah, I mean, it won't work, obviously, if you put everything on the one point, that doesn't give you enough pips to play with like you were saying before. But try this, I'll put six on the one point and the rest on the six point, that's that's sixty pips.
Okay.
Now, or or perhaps on the two point.
And and now for white, put them evenly on the three, four and five, five on each of those, that'll be sixty.
Okay.
Three, four, five, not two, three, four.
Okay, uh, oh, uh, but then here, black has three checkers that uh, oh, but well, whites, oh, oh, I think I'm forgetting a couple, couple black plots here. Uh, yeah, there you go, there you go, so, yeah, so nine on the six point.
Now it's sixty, sixty with a, there's still the gap on the six for white, but uh, much worse looking position for black.
So yeah, great, so even though black, yeah.
Put the black guys on on the two point. Some of the, no, no, sorry, on the one and two.
But there's no way to really do that, Donald, without the problem that we saw earlier of giving black too much of a racing advantage, we're trying to get even number of pips.
Uh, how about this? Sixty, oh no, wait, that changed, um, about uh, this. Okay, is that fine for you? Uh, so let's, let's see. So black is still an underdog despite being in a role on the role on this position. Okay, so he has, because he has wastage on the two and one points. Because that mean, because as soon as black starts bringing these checkers forward and and he has no more checkers on the six and five, then his roles are starting to start, will start to waste pips by like, for example, rolling a six and only have a checker on the four to to bear off, so or on the two and one, and then you waste all the pips that that you didn't use.
I agree that there is wastage if there is a gap between black's six point and his one or two. But if there's no gap, if they're all on the one and two.
Uh, yeah, there's no way to test that without, by by giving them the same pip count without uh, creating another problem, for example. Like making one player have more checkers borne off or making so that one player has checkers outside the 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 board. So I think, I think I'll just have to 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 take my word on this because I also was very confused with this concept for a long time, then it finally clicked someday. Um, yeah, um, yeah. So let, I I need to finish the the Keith, not the guys. So let's, please just take my word now and let's go. Uh, okay, uh. So and share the race cubes, okay, let's go back. Okay, so as we saw here for is double take on the final count, that was correct. And now one more, uh, another position to to practice, which is, this one is slightly different. Uh, so for adjustment here for black, plus eight on the one point, four more checkers than the limit, worth two each, and no more uh, adjustment here. And white has uh, two on the, hmm, is that in the same position? Oh, yes, of course, of course, of course. It is actually the same position as before, but there's a slight difference. Can you guys spot what the difference is?
Who's on roll?
No, both are, both have black on roll. It's the cube, notice the cube changing there. So one position has the cube centered and here black has the cube. Because remember, the Keith count can distinguish us between re-cubes and cubes as it should, right? So let's see what changes now. Because remember, on the original rule, two or three, uh, three or two pips worse offered the doubler is a redouble take. Uh, and for by the Joseph Hallett adjusted uh, criteria would be two pips only, right? So but here it doesn't matter because the final count is four, so it's not a redouble either way, okay? So it's not a redouble. But as you can see, XG uh, pins this as being as being indeed a redouble, although not by much, right? Because the equity of not redoubling, not doubling is uh, zero point zero zero two. So this shows that the Keith count is not perfect, okay? The Keith formula is not perfect at all, it can it can make mistakes. Um, but in this case, it was a very uh, small mistake. So again, so now the cube is is uh, centered again. And let's do the adjustments from step one. So no adjustment, uh, uh, sorry, there is indeed one adjustment for black on the two point because there has a checker over one here. Uh, oh, and on the one point as well, because the one point is also over one checker. So uh, four, plus four for the checkers on the one point, plus one for the checkers on the two point, for the for the lone checker on the two point, so plus five so far. No adjustment on the three point because you need four checkers or more to have an adjustment here. And no adjustment adjustment for gaps on the five, four and and six. So plus five for black. On white, we have plus two here for the two point. No adjustment on the three point because the three is the exact limit that we have, that we can have. And plus one for the gap, so I would expect my plus three adjustment for white and plus five for black. So plus three here for top player and plus five for bottom player, that's correct. And then remember, we add a seven, one-seventh to the player who's thinking on doubling, which who is uh, black because he has the dice and he has the lower pip count here, right? So um, sixty-three, uh, seven times nine is sixty-three. So that's pretty close to sixty-six here. Uh, so sixty-six plus nine equals seventy-five. And then seventy-five minus seventy is five. So five, uh, black is five worse than white, after all the adjustments. So he should not double, remember, five or 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 more is bad. It has to be at least four, being four worse is 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 a double. But five, being five worse is not a double, so. Uh, we can double check this on uh, XG, remember? Uh, there there is a, let me see what's the exact menu here. It's a menu called analyze. And under the analyze uh, menu on the top, there there is a race formulas um, item. So. Uh, so here you can check that we did everything correctly. But despite this, it was a double take, actually. But again, a small error, right? Only a point zero three error to to not double. So again, it was off, but not by much, okay? Um, so here's a message from Mr. Keith for you guys. I'm not usually wrong, but when I am, it's not by much. This uh, is a meme uh, from many years ago called the most interesting man in the world. It was a guy who who did a commercial for the the Dos Equis uh, beer here. Some of you might remember this from Instagram many years ago. Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah. And this, would anybody now want to try their hand at doing this? Like, try to, is anybody brave to? I mean, guys, we're all learning, it's okay if you make a mistake. It's the best way to learn actually is to make mistakes, so.
Wait, Eric, I have a, I have a question. And and actually, I know the answer to this question, but I just want to pose it to you. Now, whenever I explain something like the Keith count, which has, you know, there's some arithmetic that has to happen in here and you have to remember some numbers, you know, those those wastage parameters and then you have to do the calculation with the one-seventh. Do people actually do this over the board while playing?
Absolutely, yes. I had uh, an eight-hour session of money games with a friend recently over the board and I did the Keith count a few times, yes, on the on some.
So I agree with your answer. I think people are absolutely doing this over the board.
But Eric, you did it, you did it because it was a money game and there was no clock, I assume.
Let me ask the question in a different way. Eric, do you think people are doing the Keith count in a tournament with a clock?
I think even more so because in a tournament, uh, getting the cube right is even more, much more important than than on the money game because the equities are much higher depending on the specific score. Like on the critical, the score could be a critical thing and sending the cube wrong could be a huge, huge, huge blunder. So, uh, they would do the Keith count and then adjust based on the score. So, oh, for money, this would be a pass. But because I am, uh, behind in the score, I should probably be more aggressive, so I should probably take. So, you know, uh, it's, uh, oh, there's something called, Rick raised his hand. And something just popped up here with the breakout rooms, Jason and my.
Yeah, that's not me. Anyway, I think the answer to the question is, and I agree with everything that you said. People are absolutely doing this over the board, in tournaments, in clocked play. One hundred percent people are doing this. And if for no other reason, I can give you one data point, I do this in tournaments, over the board, in clocked play. I regularly do it, and you have to practice this. Uh, you have to do it offline and train yourself to do these calculations. Uh, you cannot just say, I'm going to look at a presentation like this and now I know how to do it. You have to make deliberate steps to practice this over the board.
Agreed, yes. It took me quite a while of practicing to get used to this. And it's not so slow to do as it, because it looks much slower to do on a presentation than live, right? Um, if you combine the half crossover count with the pip count, you can you can get like the pip count in like, let's say thirty seconds, the, sorry, the Keith formula, everything you need in like thirty seconds, and if you have plenty of time to spare on the clock, that's not an issue. Yeah, so it depends on how much time you have to spare, I would say. I would, probably wouldn't do the Keith count for having thirty seconds left on the clock, but if I have a big enough um, banked time, why not? Yeah, so.
And here's another point. Even if it's a correct, if the Keith count indicates it's not a double or even if it indicates it's a double and a take, there may be a few people who would pass it. And so sending the cube can be an advantage because it doesn't take too many people that would take it to make it good for you to send it even when you should not send it, if you understand what I mean.
Yeah, so if the key parameter is close, then maybe you might want to fudge it a little bit and not do exactly what the Keith formula tells you to do.
Yeah, so if the Keith formula says five, you can probably double because who knows, the opponent might pass. Because it's close enough to four, right, so which would be a double already. Um, yeah, so that's a good strategy for playing humans over the board, certainly. But you can do this regardless if it's a Keith or not, right? XG even gives you the percentage of, uh, expected passes for the double to be worth doing, you know? So, yeah. We've discussed this previously, uh, here on the study session as well.
I'd like to try this.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I think for the ace point, I have to add four for the two extra checkers.
Yes.
On the two point, I have to add one for the one extra checker.
Yes.
So that's the total now of five.
For black, yes.
And that's it. Uh, then, of course, the one-seventh thing, but so now sixty-one, is that what that says?
Yes.
Sixty-one becomes sixty-six. And then you have to add one-seventh, so that's an extra nine, so it becomes seventy-five?
Yes.
And on the top, let's see, adjustment for the empty ace point is nothing. For the twenty-three point, it is just one. And I think that's, oh, the gap on the twenty-one, I think that's zero. So I think it's just one. So I think the top guy becomes sixty-eight. So seventy-eight, seventy-five minus fifty-eight, seven, this cannot be.
Oh, wait, oh, wait, uh, so white has sixty-seven, right? So you're, you said that there's plus one for the gap on the four.
Plus, no, no, plus one for the extra checker on the twenty-three.
Uh, that's actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, plus two, two extra checkers on the twenty-three. Plus two, so sixty-nine.
Yes, and then plus one for the gap on the four, so that would be seventy.
Oh, I thought that was zero. That's a one-two, okay.
Yes, so gaps on the four, five or six, all these three points, a gap on either, on any of them is plus one.
Okay.
Uh, for each gap, so if you have a gap on the three of them, that's plus three, right? Um, yeah, so it would be six, as you correctly calculated, it would be seventy plus seventy-five. Uh, seventy versus seventy-five. So again, black has no redouble. So I think this is the same position as before, but yeah, it's the same position, but again, the cube has changed, you know? Uh, yeah, so now we're checking, is it a redouble? Well, it isn't because, again, it was a five, it's not even a regular double, right?
Neither double nor redouble.
So it is indeed not a redouble, but look, it is very close to a take, right? So very, 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 it's a borderline, uh, redouble. So this is another example of a mistake by the formula because because it's five is very, is far from two, which would be the Joseph Hallett criteria. So we have three pips more than we need to redouble, so we would expect it to be a huge no redouble, right? Because we are much worse than we theoretically need to be to redouble. But despite this, this is a borderline redouble, so we are actually not much worse at all than we need to redouble. We are very close to redoubling. So this is another, uh, instance where, uh, the Keith formula didn't get it exactly right. There are some positions that are outliers that where this happens. But mostly, most of the time, the Keith formula will help you very much and will be correct, right? So I'm just showing you guys that it's not perfect by any means, okay? Yeah.
Eric, we better wrap this up. It's just about time for the tournament. Okay, I'm gonna do a sign-off here. First, I want to thank Eric very much for doing this presentation. This was really great. Um, and I hope, Eric, you will do some more presentations in the future. They've all been really good. Okay, thank you all for joining us for the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for December 3rd, 2025. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com.
So let me just quickly finish it with the last one, very quickly. Uh, this was from last week's tournament where I played against Rick. Okay, so I did the Keith count and found out that it was a redouble pass. And also, as you can see, XG agrees, so I did it all correctly. But it was a double take and it was a huge blunder to pass. So this is the worst example here of why, when the Keith count can be wrong, so. I keep saying, uh, so again, with Mr. Keith having words for you guys. What he said earlier about not being wrong by much, uh, is not exactly right, okay? So just to drive home the fact that, uh, it's not a perfect formula, but it helps a lot, okay? Even though it's not perfect, being very good is great and it helps you a lot. It is probably better than you estimating the double take, okay? The Keith is going to be better than you, more correct than you most of the time, okay? So, yeah.
Thanks so much, Eric.